Charlie, I will say the homework or the quiz, that reading, whoo. That was, it was really good. I really enjoyed it, but it really tested my, tested my brain.
The Asimov short story?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty crazy to think, you know, across huge scales of space and time. Yeah. Are you, is this, are you a freshman in?
Yeah.
You know, yeah, yeah, this, the first year or two of university life is just one continued existential crisis. So, act accordingly, you're doing it.
So is the third, so is the third one and the second, all of it.
Yeah, exactly. But you kind of resign yourself after a while.
I was wondering, on, I think this Wednesday or Thursday, it says there's a, we should take notes on this Maritania film.
Maritania, yeah, um, yeah, I'll post that soon.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, um, you don't necessarily have to take notes, just enjoy it and think about, um, you know, your own energy use and the energy use that you see in that film. So it's a, it's a nation on the, in northwest Africa, on the western edge of the Sahara and really interesting things going on there. So they have the longest railroad in the world that brings iron ore from deep in the Sahara to the coast. And, um, yeah.
Cool, thanks.
Part of the transition from going from our own personal energy use scaling up to like societal energy use. And, you know, all we ever hear about is places like, um, well, America, Germany, France, China, India. And it's, I think it's informative to think about other places because there's a lot more to the world than just us. So today is just going to be a study session. I'm going to cover just maybe five to 10 more minutes of slides from Friday because we didn't finish. And there's a few concepts that I want to introduce to you, namely combined cycle, electricity generation and a little cartoon intro to refrigeration. Otherwise, we'll spend 40 minutes on, on the homework, okay? So you have to, you have to stomach a little bit of lecture first. See, we have 54 people. It's good enough for a couple of weeks into the quarter. Let's get going. So we left off last time talking about the Brayton cycle or the gas turbine. This is what's in downtown Bellingham and on a cold morning in the winter, you'll see a bunch of steam coming up from, from downtown. And that's either one to three of these gas turbines in operation. So yeah, you feed, feed it with gas, it creates high pressure, high temperature. It's then expanded through this turbine here. Expand it through the turbine and that spins this shaft, it's connected to that shaft. And then that spins all the propellers, all the blades in the compressor. And that sucks a bunch of cold oxygen-rich air into the combustion chamber, greatly increasing the pressure. And it, uh, in short, increases the enthalpy of that reaction so that you can extract more energy from the combination of burning natural gas in, in the presence of oxygen. And this is exactly how jet engines work too. The reason why my carbon, my personal carbon footprint and energy use is much higher than average despite all my efforts with like plug-in hybrid electric cars, solar panels, energy efficiency in my own home, riding my bike everywhere around town, it's because I take a few flights a year. And if you picture like a seven eight seven or a seven triple seven going to London, there's two giant turbines on those wings. And so the equivalent to power all of Bellingham is now attached to two wings and it's flying for eight hours. And so there's only 300 people on that plane and it's, it's a lot of energy just dedicated to putting your butt in a seat halfway across the world. All right. So what's really cool is you can get 60% efficiency from natural gas if you use a combined cycle power plant. And in this setup, you have the Brayton cycle or a natural gas turbine that I just, just talked about in the last slide at the front end. And so that's powered by natural gas. The high-pressure gas goes through the turbine, spins a generator, generates some electricity. But then the exit, the exit gases from that turbine gets piped through what's called a heat recovery generator. It's just a big box, a giant box with a bunch of pipes circling through it. And you have feed water going through all those pipes and then the waste gases filling up the rest of that box, the waste gases from this turbine. And those gases boil that water in the pipe, generate steam, and then you can pass that steam through a second turbine using this Rankine cycle. And so this is a much bigger scale turbine because it's, it's steam is the working fluid rather than high-pressure air from burning natural gas. And that Rankine engine is connected to a second generator and then sent to the switchyard and transmission lines as well. So you get to generate electricity twice with the same amount of energy from the natural gas. First, you run a high-pressure, high-temperature Brayton turbine. And then you take the waste gases to run a lower temperature, lower pressure Rankine turbine, both of which generate electricity. You get about 40% efficiency from that. And then you get to tack on another 20% efficiency from that original chemical energy in the gas with the Rankine cycle for a combined, combined efficiency of 60%. So this, this is about as good as we got right now as far as extracting chemical energy and making electricity. This is, this is, I wouldn't say it's state-of-the-art, but it's state-of-the-art for societal use, right? You can do better in a laboratory, but that's not going to empower a city. So it's pretty cool. Still makes CO2 though. It's not, it's not perfect. It's not where we want to go. These things are massive. This is a combined cycle plant down in New Mexico. And so this makes 600 megawatts. So this is, this is enough to power probably like Portland. This is a big city scale numbers. And so this object here is the Brayton turbine, the gas turbine. This giant square here is that heat recovery generator. So this is just filled with all the waste gases from this Brayton turbine. And then there's a Byzantine system of pipes to extract heat from this, from this waste gas. And that boils water and then spins a Rankine turbine back here. And then, yeah, waste gases go up, the, the CO2 and water exits the, the top here. And so this is two of them. So they're probably each 300 megawatts each. So it's, it's pretty incredible, massive, massive structures. When you drive on I-5, like have a lookout, you know, between here in Portland or here in Sacramento, if you go that, that far south, you'll see these big, um, big turbines on the side of freeway every once in a while. And this is, this is what's powering your homes along with a bunch of hydro power and other things up here. Chat. Do we have to be familiar with natural gas combined cycle plant for the midterm? I, I don't, not really, no. I mean, it might, there might be some qualitative question like, why does the Belling plant not use two-stage? It's, it's more expensive. And the Bellingham plant is more of what's called a peaker plant. It's just, it, there's baseload provided by hydro power here in the northwest and a little bit of coal from Montana and a little bit of nukes from Bonneville. And then when there's a spike in demand, usually due to increased heating needs in, in the winter time, then they fire up this peaker plant, which again is just an airplane engine, spins it up, delivers extra electricity when it's needed. Okay. How would those power plants decrease their CO2 output? There's really no, no option. That's methane is made out of one carbon and four hydrogens. You light it on fire, the hydrogens combined with oxygen make water, releases heat and light. The carbon reacts with oxygen, releases heat and light and makes CO2. And it, that's just existentially what it is. You, you're burning carbon and so you're going to make CO2. You could capture it using amine solutions, integrated gas, gasification and capture plants. There's one that exists in America and a couple in China. But these are starting to get really expensive and, and silly. I mean, uh, wind and solar power is much cheaper than even a natural gas power plant today. You can't control the wind and solar, so you'd have to tack on something like energy storage. But the way you get energy is by making CO2. So if you don't make CO2 with natural gas or coal, you're not going to get energy. It's just how it is. All right. Does anyone want to, I'm reading the chat. Does anyone want to exchange info and work homework questions together and study, et cetera? As a group outside of the class, I do Discord. Okay, yeah. So put another link to that Discord. I might all during the homework session today, I'll set up a little breakout room session just short for five minutes so you guys can get to know each other a little bit better. All right. Another system I want to talk about, so we've talked about Rankine, that's a steam turbine. Brayton, that's a gas turbine, is a refrigerator. These are complicated because it's, it's weird. It's easy to make heat, it's hard to remove heat from something. And so they, they do a trick. Let's think about where I want to start in this cycle. Let's start here. You have a liquid. When a liquid evaporates, when it turns to a gas, it goes from molecules that are moving about nicely in the liquid to molecules that are moving about very, very vigorously in a gaseous stage. And they start, you know, they move much more rapidly. To have all that extra kinetic energy, energy of motion, they have to pull energy from somewhere. And they usually extract heat from the environment to get that extra energy. And so this is called the latent heat of evaporation. When you take water at 99.9 degrees Celsius and bring it to 100C, it takes a little bit of energy based on the heat capacity equation. You know, delta E equals mass times heat capacity times delta T. But to lift it into the steam phase, you have to add a little extra energy. And this extra energy is required for that phase change from liquid to gas. And again, it pulls that heat from the environment. In the case of your stove, it pulls it from your, your burner. The way a refrigerator works is it takes a liquid that evaporates or boils at a really, really, really low temperature, a temperature that's lower than the freezing point of water usually. And that way it can pull heat out of the environment at a really, really low temperature. So picture like if you go to the doctor, you all should be getting your flu shot right now. And they'll rub a little bit of alcohol on your arm and it'll feel cold. Why does it feel cold? Because that alcohol has a very low evaporation point, much lower than water. And so it's pulling heat out of your arm to evaporate that alcohol. And so something like a refrigerator uses a crazy fluid, CFC 12, for example, which has a boiling point at negative 30 degrees Celsius. And so you take that liquid and you expand it, you expose it to atmospheric pressure and it's going to evaporate. As it evaporates, it pulls heat out of the air. And so that pulls heat out of your refrigerator box and makes your refrigerator box cooler. And so that's how your refrigerator gets cold. And then you take that vapor that's now been, you run it through a radiator basically, and the cold air enters your fridge. And then now it's in the vapor stage. To complete the cycle, you have to compress it. So then you run a compressor, you increase the pressure a whole bunch. As pressure goes up, the, uh, the fluid becomes a liquid again and it's condensed. But also as pressure goes up, temperature goes up. So you have to get rid of this warm air that you've now created or this warm heat. And so you blow that out with a fan out the back of your refrigerator. That's why the back of your refrigerator is really hot. And now you're back in the liquid stage and you can re-expand it to extract more heat from the center of your refrigerator. And it goes again and again and again. A heat pump that we use in your house to heat your house works in the opposite direction. You evaporate something outside your house, make the outside colder. And then you compress it and blow the hot air from the compressor into your house or carry it via some working fluid to a duct somewhere in your house that, that then delivers the warm, the warm air. So it's kind of confusing. Just know that the way you get things colder in the refrigerator setup is by evaporating something, by taking advantage of a phase change of something that boils at a really low temperature. Okay, um, we'll talk about energy efficiency in a later lecture. I'll probably have Joel Swisher give, give all that. But in general, um, if you want to reduce your personal energy use, you should think about this energy pyramid. It's kind of like the food pyramid, even though that's turns out to be garbage. You shouldn't eat nothing but carbs all day, like we were told. But this one's still real. It goes along kind of with reduce, reuse, recycle, right? First off, just don't use as much energy. So reduce your energy consumption. When you do use energy, use it as efficiently as possible by using better light bulbs, things like that, using LED, not a CFL like pictured here. And then make sure that energy is powered by renewable energy. We'll talk about this a lot in, later in the class, but this is just a little, little look at it. Blah, blah, blah. These are all efficiency measures, efficiency measures in industry. This is all extra stuff. You can read it if you're interested, but I don't want to belabor it. I want to get to transportation before we get to the homework. Heat pump, water heaters. Vehicle miles traveled. Okay, um, if you're driving a car, try to maintain a more or less average speed. Don't do fitful starts and stops. Don't be that guy that floors it off the line and then slams on the brake at the next, uh, at the next stoplight. Because most energy is lost just from propulsion, like accelerating your car and then, then wasting that energy as you apply the brakes. This, this chart looks at some of that and how to, how to maintain average speed. It's also better for traffic jams too, you know? Leave a gap, someone fills the gap, oh, well, you'll still get to Seattle, you know, maybe a minute later. It's not going to change your life. Uh, okay, I like this chart. It's from McKay's book. It shows on the X, X-axis speed for all different modes of transportation. And on the Y-axis is this passenger MPG. So what's a passenger MPG? You can think of like your Honda Civic that gets 30 miles per gallon. If you have three people in it, its passenger MPG would now be 90 passenger miles per gallon because you now moved three people 30 miles, three times 30 is 90. So this is, this is looking at passenger MPG, not raw MPG. It's, it's important to think about. So let's start out with something we all know, walking. Energy consumption is maybe a kilowatt hour per 100 passenger kilometers, three kilowatt hours per 100 passenger kilometers. That seems about right. I mean, it's crazy to think of it this way, but you eat three kilowatt hours of food per day and you could maybe walk 100 kilometers in one day. It, it suck, you could do it with that amount of energy. This is, I love this. So here's a bicycle right here. It's like the only thing, maybe this electric, full electric train over here. But the bicycle is like the only thing we've invented that's more efficient than walking. And it's pretty old invention. Why is a cycle bicycle so much more efficient than walking? Any guesses?
It's how mechanical, mechanical work.
Yeah.
Inertia, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Low friction. The wheel.
Yeah, low friction. That's, that's, that's why. So when you're walking, your shoes are scuffing on the ground and your forward motion gets, gets absorbed by friction of your shoe against the ground with each step. Whereas a bicycle has much, much lower friction. And if you look at like those, those like crazy guys that wear nothing but like spandex all weekend long and they have like the $10,000 bikes. If you look at the tires on those bikes, they're super, super skinny and it's all about minimizing friction as much as possible. Yeah. Okay, let's look at the opposite end of the spectrum. This is a jet ski. This is the worst mode of transportation humans have ever invented. So you get like five passenger MPG. Why? It's because jet skis have a really short length between bow and stern. And the way a boat works, at least a powered boat, is it generates a wave and then surfs that wave. And the size of the waves and how fast that wave moves depends on how big that wave is. The efficiency of the wave depends on the size of the wave. And a jet ski makes a really small wave. So it's terrible form of transportation. Yeah. And then, then everything else is kind of how you'd expect it, like, you know, car 33 miles per gallon. A bad car like a Range Rover is much worse. Yeah. And then basically carpooling makes a lot of sense. Electric cars, much better than an average car by, you know, factor of, factor of three to six. And that's just because of the efficiency of going from electricity to mechanical rather than chemical to waste heat in your engine to, to mechanical. That's not total waste heat. It's like high temperature heat, but it's still way down that energy quality line. Okay. Chainsaw can cut more wood with less energy than a handsaw. Interesting. Not to think about that. Because you don't have to arrest it. It all just goes in one continuous, it has some momentum. Where is an e-bike? I don't know. I had, I attached a battery to my bike, which is an extra cycle, so my little girls can ride on the back. And the battery holds 0.7 kilowatt hours. And the charge lasts an entire week of commuting, five, five days a week to campus and back. Campus is like three miles round trip, three times five is 15. So it's like, um, what, 20, 22 miles per kilowatt hour, 44 kilometers per kilowatt hour, the inverse of that. It's, it's down here at like 300-ish. So, yeah, not as good as bicycle, but better than luxury cars and stuff like that. All right. Let me see if there's anything else in this lecture that I wanted to go over, talk about computation. That computation continues to get more and more efficient as we reduce the size of the silicon chips, the die size. But we're starting to get up on quantum limits, you know, now that we're down to like seven nanometers, we have to start worrying about electrons telling through things. Communication, blah, blah, okay. Yeah, I think that's enough for this lecture. Let's get on to the homework. Sound good? So, so I'm sure this. So this homework was more qualitative than the last one. I just was reading through it. I realized I had a few typos. I don't know what I was thinking when I made this, but that's. So there's a few qualitative questions in the beginning. And then I accidentally have a question here. And here, there's two questions at the start here that I forgot to number. So pay attention to that. Put a class announcement for that. On the energy quality bit of it. And then the difficult question is 2.2 down here. I think that's the only math question you really have to do. All right. Let me open the chat. All right. Oh, good. Someone mentioned about the additional costs of energy to feed the horse, all that. 1.4 is the first request. Okay, so let's start there. There exist wondrous phenomena in our universe, stars, tornadoes, cats, dance parties, the internet, et cetera, that show remarkable complexity and order. So, um, these are not disordered chaotic systems. They are not existed. They, they they're not entropic. Um, so how are these phenomena? How are you and I not violating the second law of thermodynamics? So the second law of thermodynamics says that everything tends to disperse and spread out. Everything goes to waste heat eventually, like in that Asimov story. So how, how is all this order maintained in a universe that tends toward disorder, answering one or two sentences? All right. So now I'm going to try to do one of these, these are. Where's participating? All right, there it is. I had to stop sharing. So I'm going to do a breakout room and you guys can talk this over for like four minutes. This is a way for you guys to get to know each other and start building homework groups, podcast groups, that sort of thing. So there's 56 people here. Let's, let's make, wait, 56 divided by eight would be seven. That's about right. So let's do, let's do eight rooms. Give this a shot. See you in about five minutes or four minutes. Give this a shot, see you in about five minutes or four minutes. And that's nerve wracking. So I have this timer that says that the rooms will close in thirty seconds.
It's just basically a race to get out of the breakout room because you just don't want it to count down and force you out.
Okay, yeah, it was, that was like the longest three minutes of my life, I'm never gonna do that again. Stressful. All right, nine seconds.
Were you not in a breakout room, Charlie?
Uh, I was just sitting here by myself, it was very lonely.
Oh, you should go to the breakout rooms, like, talk to people, that makes it less boring.
Okay, yeah, I'll definitely do that next time, I'm getting used to it. Okay, so any ideas? How do things like, how do cats exist, how do dance parties exist without violating the second law of thermodynamics? How do we get all this order? How did this can get made, like, this, you will never find this in nature, right? This took a tremendous amount of energy, I guess I just gave away the answer. How does this stuff work?
Uh, we have enough energy to do it.
Energy input for a product output.
Yeah, and then, so how does it not violate the second law of thermodynamics, what's the cost?
It creates, it creates more entropy around it.
Right, exactly, so that's the key. To maintain ordered structures such as a human being, I'm creating all this entropy around me. Way more entropy than would ever be produced if I had, if I didn't exist at all. And so, if anything, these complex structures, these ordered structures of, you know, beauty and symmetry and and activity and intelligence and everything else. They're accelerating the heat death of the universe, they're making the universe run out of useful energy even more quickly. And that's what society is doing, so, I mean, each passing decade certainly post industrial revolution has been accelerating the production of waste heat. We're generating more and more entropy every every passing decade as society gets more and more connected, more and more sophisticated. Communication, travel, everything increases. I love the fact that my existence is contributing to the eventual death of the universe, but that's our job, that's what we're supposed to do, we're we're supposed to be, you know, brilliant burning fires, that's 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 the whole nature of our existence, right? Someone that doesn't do anything is is kind of a boring human being, so be crazy. Build, contribute, you know, scale, don't destroy. Yeah, so that's how it all works. The post-industrial entropy measurable in the universal sense? Wow, that's a insane question. Yes, it's definitely measurable in terms of what's called entropy production density. If you look at this, the mass of an object and you measure its entropy production per unit mass or entropy production per unit volume, it's continually to increase over evolutionary time scales, over the evolution of the universe. So you take the the map, the entropy density of of a star and compared to a planet, entropy production of a planet per unit mass is much higher than a star, there's more interesting things happening. Entropy production per unit mass of a forest is is greater than entropy production per unit mass of a planet. Entropy production per unit mass of an individual leaf in a forest is higher than than the forest itself. And one of the most entropic structures that exists in the universe is in terms of density is our brains, it's pretty crazy. So we we are, our brains are kind of the pinnacle of entropy mass density. Other things like computers are are passing us and, you know, you take integrated parts of society, they have very high entropy production per unit mass, there's a book by a Harvard physicist, Eric Chayson, called the I forget the name of the book, but it's Eric Chayson, I think it's something like the arrow of time, and it's all about mapping entropy production per unit mass over the course of universe, the universe's history. Can we go over two point two, can we go over one point two? Let's do two, one point two first, because that's easier. In the nineteen ninety nine science fiction thriller, The Matrix, sentient machines imprisoned humans in a false reality, I'll share my screen. In a false reality so that they could use humans as an energy source. Machines accomplices by two feeding human remains, the living, and harvesting their body heat. Using the first and second law of thermodynamics, we speak two brief points as to why the movie's science advisors are the ones imprisoned in the false reality. Okay, so let's let's think of this system, right? And it's a you take a dead guy. You feed it to a living guy, they make heat, they extract the heat and power a computer. So what kind of, what type of energy is this?
Chemical energy?
Yeah, so this is chemical. What kind of energy is this?
It's a low temp or barely.
Low temp waste heat, right, I mean, I'm at ninety eight point six Fahrenheit or whatever, so this is low temp. Recall a human being burns about a hundred watts, right, that's our power rating. That's why if you have a house party, I mean, you can't, and more of his coronavirus, if you have like fifteen people in a house, a space heater maxes out, remember, the max amount of power coming out of your wall is fifteen hundred watts, so if you have fifteen people in your house, now you have a space heater in your house. That's why parties get get, well, in one one way, they get nasty, they get nasty in all sorts of ways. But one way they get nasty is if you have thirty people in your house, you have two, you have two space heaters. So, yeah, we go from chemical to low temperature to what kind of power, what kind of energy does the machines need in the movie, in The Matrix? What kind of energy do computers need?
Electrical.
Electrical. So if we have that energy ladder, we started here at chem, we went all the way to the bottom, and then we went all the way up here. It's so dumb, like, just go from here to here. Using a fuel cell, I mean, the movie wouldn't exist anymore, and it's a fun movie. This is the darkest science question I've ever had to answer. Yeah, well, it should be, should give you hope, because it's like, at least this scenario can exist. There isn't, like, machines running us. We may very well be in a simulation, but there might not be bodies at all, that would make much more sense, that we just have electrical impulses tricking us into thinking that this is reality. But the idea of some body being somewhere is absolutely false. All right. Just go from where to where, go from chemical energy straight to electricity, skip, skip that thing. Right? Or, I mean, these computers really just should be using wind or solar and to just not have dead guys involved at all, it's a waste of space. All right. Two point two. Clear all drawings. Stop annotating. So, so this is electricity mix for Washington State, October twenty fourteen. Our coal use has gone way down from this six ninety five, fortunately, and we're still continue to be dominated by hydro. And in place of coal, our gas consumption's grown, and our renewables has grown, but here's a snapshot, October twenty fourteen. Here's electricity generation in the month of October. And here is the efficiency of these different fuel sources and their their generators. So calculate the total electricity generated in Washington in October, that's easy, you just add up these one, two, three, four, five numbers. Is it even possible to extract useful energy from a low temp heat source, yeah, you use a thermal generator, an RTG, that's been using a low, that's using a radioactive temperature source. But yes, you just use two different metals and change the connectivity, I can talk about that later, let's get to the homework. So in generating electricity, energy was lost to the environment as entropy was produced, so this is the gases going up the smokestacks, et cetera, waste heat. Let's look at the electricity generated from coal. How much chemical energy was contained in the coal to generate six hundred and ninety five gigawatt hours of electricity? How much chemical energy was lost as waste heat? Okay, so I'm gonna switch to this other camera and work through this problem. So stop this share. Change my video source to this one. Get it in focus. We have our plant or a bunch of them all added together. And they make electricity in the month of October, and they made six hundred and ninety five gigawatt hours. So recall, a giga means ten to the nine, it's a billion watt hours or a million kilowatt hours. Tons of electricity, but we're talking about all of Washington State here. There's pile of coal. It's being fed into this plant. It has some amount of chemical energy. It's a bunch of carbon. You combine it with oxygen. Makes CO2 plus heat, and that's what runs that, that's what runs that power plant. So the question is, how much? What equation do you think I might need to use here, something about like energy inputs and energy outputs?
The efficiency equation?
Yeah, excellent, so eta equals useful output over useful inputs or societal inputs, what what it costs for society to put in there. Or also, it's get over pay. So we see the efficiency on the homework right there, it's at forty percent, we know that the efficiency of this coal power plant equals forty percent. We also know what we got, that's the six hundred and ninety five gigawatt hours. So let's rearrange this equation to solve for our input, which was coal, this is the input. So rearranging this equation, I can put useful inputs up here and put the efficiency eta down in the denominator here. So now I have input equals output over efficiency, just by simply rearranging that equation. So this will equal the output, six hundred and ninety five gigawatt hours divided by the efficiency, I don't write forty percent here, because that's that's not something you really use in mathematics. What does percent represent, it means parts of a hundred, so it's forty over a hundred. Another way of writing that would be zero point four. Taking that number forty and dividing it by a hundred.
Is there a unit we would tie with the efficiency, the zero point four?
No, efficiency is unitless, because it's always jewel over jewel or gigawatt hour over gigawatt hour or, you know, kilograms of coal over kilograms of coal, whatever you want your energy unit to be, it's dimensionless, it's unitless. And so that must mean, so we have gigawatt hours of units over something that's dimensionless. So that means this input answer better be in gigawatt hours. So that this equation balances dimensionally. So the chemical energy in the coal equals our input, which equals all of that, is six hundred and ninety five gigawatt hours over zero point four. So this equals six ninety five times ten divided by four equals six nine five zero divided by four. I don't know what that'd be, something like seventeen
seventeen thirty seven point five.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, so let's let's think about this. Is this number bigger than this number? So we had this efficiency equation equals zero point four, and now we're saying what we got was six ninety five and what we paid was seventeen thirty seven. That checks out, that this math looks good. Think about it intuitively, should the amount of energy here be bigger than the amount of energy here? Should it?
Yes, because you have lots.
Yeah, 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 because of the second law of thermodynamics. And so that means sixty percent of that energy went up the smokestack. Second law of thermo. When you do an energy conversion, in this case, chemical to electricity, waste heat's produced. It's inescapable, it's gone, it went up the smokestack, that that's what it, what happened when we burned that coal. We got some some electricity and a lot went elsewhere. Okay, so how much went elsewhere, that's the second part of that question. Well, we know that the total equals the input. And that total will also equal the useful output. This is just this plus this, right, useful output plus useless output. And we know all the, we know the input was seventeen thirty seven, we know the useful was six ninety five, this is all gigawatt hours. And so the smoke is that, you can rearrange seventeen thirty seven minus six ninety five equals the stack. So it's about a thousand.
Couldn't you also just multiply one point seven K times point sixty?
Exactly, yes, that would be another way to do it, because saying forty percent of it went to electricity, sixty percent of it went to smoke, so, yeah, seventeen thirty seven times point six would equal that. Questions about this? Okay, it's doing okay. Do you want the breakout rooms again to try to like organize study groups, or were you able to kind of remember your names a teeny bit? I think.
We ever went over names.
I think you can see the people via canvas, you can click people and start like cyber stalking each other.
Charlie, so like the last equation, seventeen thirty seven minus six ninety five equals smoke, what was that?
Uh, yeah, it's a little flippant with just writing smoke, so this is chemical energy in the coal minus the electrical energy that we got from offering the coal power plant equals waste heat energy. The entropic energy that's no longer useful that went up the smokestack, that went up, yeah. So we're trying to figure out in that question, two point two, how much chemical energy was there initially, how much chemical energy was contained in the coal? And then how much of the chemical energy was lost to waste heat? So we lit some coal on fire and we made two kinds of energy, waste heat and electricity.
Okay, so that smoke, the seventeen thirty seven minus six ninety five equals smoke, what's what's the thousand?
That's seventeen thirty seven minus six ninety Uh, that's seventeen thirty seven minus six ninety five. It should be like. It should be, uh, one thousand forty or something.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
All right. Uh, we are at time, but I'll hang out for another ten minutes if you guys have other questions.
Yeah, I would like to ask to do a question.
Go for it.
Can we do one point three if possible?
Yeah. So one point three says, this is all the like kind of sentence answers. On entropy. Since energy is conserved, what happens to the kinetic energy? Of a car after you take your foot off the accelerator? So. Cruising down the freeway, seventy miles an hour, take your foot off the accelerator. Um, you don't just keep on going at seventy miles per hour forever. Your car will slowly come to a stop. Um, so that kinetic energy, that energy of motion gets lost somewhere. I mean, ultimately is waste heat, but where do you think the, uh? Where do you think those losses are incurred? Friction, heat, sound? Yeah. Um, so where, what's the friction?
Uh, wouldn't that just be like the axles?
Yeah, those are actually pretty, pretty good. That's not where most of.
Maybe it's the tires instead.
Tires is, is a component for sure. Air, yeah, somebody. Uh, yeah, Zoe wrote air. That's definitely the biggest one. So what's happening when you're actually driving a car? I mean, why you have to keep the gas pedal when you're going seventy miles an hour? You still have to apply, apply a pressure to the gas pedal. Well, what's happening? I don't know why this car looks like a taxicab in nineteen seventy six, but what happens is, um. There's air, little molecules of air in front of your car. And you're pushing them, you're pushing them out of the way and some of them get pushed to seventy miles per hour. And so. What you're doing is moving all the air around you. You're not moving the car forward. You're pushing all the air around you. That's, that's where all the energy is going. So it's, it's lost to friction with the air. Ultimately, those air molecules swirl around and bump into each other and generate heat.
Yeah, what is that called? Isn't that called like drag or something?
Drag, exactly. Yeah. Yeah, the car is going through a big, big bowl of soup that is our atmosphere. It has to push that air out of the way. But there's definitely friction with the tires too. And you need that, otherwise your car would fly off the road, right? If you took a turn, you had no friction on your tires, then you'd slide up, slide off and crash. And that's why, yeah. That's why you shouldn't drive with ball tires. You'll get better gas mileage, but. Or overly inflated tires. That's the other way. You can reduce friction, increase gas mileage, but you reduce traction.
And do you think we're done with this question? I saw in chat. Uh, people wanted to do two point three after this one.
Two point three. Okay, so that's, now how much PUD Everett, Washington has an electricity mix that is one hundred percent carbon free renewables. Yeah, they're killing it. It is better to heat one's home with electricity. Of gas, no, electricity or gas. Sorry for that typo, typo. So it said, is it better to heat one's home with electricity or gas in Everett? From a greenhouse gas and energy conservation perspective? So, um. In your house. You could have. A gas heater that's a flame. Or an electric heater. I'll just draw like a resistor, toaster oven resistor. These have different efficiencies. An electric resistance heater, you put in electricity and it makes a piece of metal hot and that's a hundred percent efficient. You burn gas in a boiler. Or a furnace and that's about ninety percent efficient. So if you have. A hundred percent carbon free. Electricity in Everett, it's certainly better to, to heat. With electricity because you're not going to generate any, any carbon. And the electricity. Is likely from renewable resources, which are quite efficient. So this was kind of a give me question. On the midterm, I'm going to have a much more nuanced question. And so let's move down to San Diego, California. San Diego, California. Most of electricity is generated by natural gas. So a natural gas power plant. And this is going to be combined cycle. So let's say it's sixty percent. See, you guys can see that. Sixty percent efficiency at the generator. And so now. You could have a gas pipeline going to your house. Burning gas at ninety percent or you can have. Electric power lines going to your house. Making heat at a hundred percent. So in a place like that, it'd be better to heat with natural gas. Because the efficiency, the system's efficiency of gas would be. Ninety percent, whereas the system's efficiency. Of electricity. Would be chaining these efficiencies together, which would be zero point six, sixty percent multiplied by. One point zero, a hundred percent equals sixty percent. So in a situation like that, it would be better to eat with gas. You would lower CO2 because electricity came from natural gas. And it would save energy because you're not, you're, the heat, the waste heat is going into your home when you burn the natural gas, whereas. In this case, in the electricity case, the waste heat is going up the smoke stack. So in some cases, it's better to use, uh, natural gas than electricity. That being said. If you used a heat pump. That pulled heat from the outside using that refrigeration cycle. So let's write heat pump. They actually have an efficiency of four hundred percent in terms of generating heat. It's not making energy out of nowhere. It's just moving energy from one place to another. So the system's efficiency of a heat pump. Would be point six to make the electricity multiplied by four. That's four hundred percent for the heat pump. And so the total. Efficiency for making heat would be two hundred and forty percent. And so in that case, if you have a heat pump in San Diego, that's your best. But not everybody can afford a heat pump and that's why things like energy equity, good policy rebates and stuff like that. Need to be used to incentivize this clean energy, um, transition. That's stuff we'll talk about in the second half of the class. How to, how to make things fair, how to get the whole society on board to. Producing less carbon and still having healthy, happy homes. Right? Just not make it something that only the rich can afford. All right, any last questions about, uh, the homework?
I don't get where you got those numbers.
All these numbers?
Yeah.
Um, just doing this energy game for ten years. Uh, the sixty percent is from a combined cycle. That's the Brayton and the Rankin cycle, the jet engine plus the steam turbine. Uh, so the efficiency of a natural gas combined cycle plant is sixty percent. Uh, the efficiency of heating your home with natural gas is ninety percent. This is well known because you light natural gas on fire. And you'd think it'd be a hundred percent just because you lit something on fire. And so all that chemical energy would turn into waste heat. But some of that, that chemical energy is lost to evaporating water. When you burn natural gas and make water. And then you evaporate that water with the steam, with the heat from the natural gas. And so you've turned some of that energy from the natural gas into moving water molecules around a steam. So that's ninety percent. Electric resistive heating is a hundred percent just by definition. When you run electricity through a, a, a resistor, something like, you know, crummy metal in a toaster oven. It makes it glow red. Um, a hundred percent electricity gets turned into heat. And then heat pump, um, this depends on the exterior and interior temperature of your home. They can range from about. A hundred and fifty percent all the way up to six hundred percent. Uh, for a place like Bellingham, it'd be about four hundred percent. San Diego, it might even be better. So this is just stuff I pulled out of my head. Um. Uh, if you get in, if you get more and more into these energy sciences and energy policy, then. These numbers just become kind of second nature, like knowing that there's two cups and a pint or something like that. But, um, yeah, that's where I got it from. You would not be required to memorize any of this for a midterm in this class.
Oh, uh, okay.
Are we going to go over the content that will be on the midterm sometime in these next two weeks? Sort of, um, I mean. The midterm will all be extracted from the lectures so far. And then again, the midterm is a take home that goes over the, that will be administered over the course of a week. And so we can talk about the problems in class, right? We'll have three days to, to discuss the midterm. Um, so. Just, just ask questions during the lecture. Once the, once the test is administered.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm out of here unless there's a quick question.
All right, one quick question then.
Yeah.
So you said that, uh, it's ninety percent efficient for. Gas heaters in homes, right?
Yeah, gas furnaces, gas boilers, ninety percent efficient.
All right.
Uh, my, my boiler is a piece of garbage. It's from the seventies. So it's like, uh, seventy eight percent efficient. Um, state of the art boilers are like ninety five percent efficient, but good, good typical guess is ninety percent efficient. Oh, yes.
So when, when making power with, uh, natural gas, it's only fifty percent efficient.
And no, because, um, what's actually happening in this picture, I'll, I'll draw it better. Here's a house. Here's a natural gas pipeline. Here's a natural gas power plant. So you can take gas to the power plant and run. Electricity to your house, or you can just take gas directly to your house and burn it. So that energy. For heating your house from a natural gas furnace or boiler comes straight from the natural gas pipeline. It doesn't even know that this power plant exists.
Okay. Yeah, but like gas power facilities. Right?
Uh, so you could heat your home either with, by burning natural gas or with an electric heater. If you're heating your home with electrical heater, it has to come from the electricity power line going into your house. If you're heating your home with natural gas, it go, it's, it's run by the gas pipeline going into your house. And that's why you can heat your home with natural gas, even if there's a power outage. You're just lighting something on fire, making heat.
Okay.
Does that help? I'm trying to think of like what you're picturing to, oh.
Yeah, I, I think I got it. I think I got it.
Yeah, just think of like burning the natural gas, same as if you had a boiler that you're running on coal or, or wood, right? Has nothing to do with electricity. You're just throwing, throwing something flammable into a box and lighting it on fire.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. And that's what they're doing at this power plant too. It's just they're making a big generator spin to turn it into electricity. Okay. All right. Thanks for your participation, everyone. Um, thank you very much. Yeah. I will see you all Wednesday.